Okay. Ready. I'd like to call this meeting to order a regular meeting of the village board on Monday, March 21st at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all village board members present except for trustee Hudson, who is excused. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. Next item, Ms. President's report. I don't have anything to report tonight, so we can go on to the next item of announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee and department reports. We'll start with committee reports with committee chairs with trustee Kaminsky.
Public Works will meet in this room on Wednesday, April 6th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Trustee Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet on Monday, April 18th at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you. Trustee Myers.
Hope this thing works. Our next meeting is on April 7th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, that'll be for public safety.
For public safety.
Excuse me. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee or department reports? Trustee Jan Miller.
I'd like to let everyone know that the Independence Day, 4th of July, meeting will be held in this room on Tuesday, March 29th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee or department reports? Seeing there are none, we'll go on to the next item, which is citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There is one public hearing on tonight's agenda. If you are here to speak for or against that public hearing, please wait until that item comes up on our agenda to do so. But if there's anyone within our audience or joining us via WebEx, I'd like to come forward for public input or public appearance. You're welcome to do so. All I would ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to come forward? Yes, ma'am. Turn the microphone on for...
My name is Melanie Smythe. I'm a Germantown resident, and I have several remarks about the planning process. But before I get into that, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody in the village who was very even-handed going through the last couple of years with the craziness of COVID. It's been kind of nutty, but I do appreciate how even-handed you guys have been in dealing with all of the things and the craziness around us. So, thank you very much. Okay, I might be missing something in these remarks because I came to the process late. I live in the northern part of the village and don't get utility bills, so I didn't get any notices that way. I did meet Emily from the Planning Department at Oktoberfest and did get the survey, so that, other than the Zoom meeting, was, has been my participation with the planning process. I'm an architect. I've got 22 licenses, and I've been involved in a grassroots planning process in another state, in another community, where we spent two years pulling together people and getting about 60% of the residents in our community together to create a plan for the future and make something that was workable, and that something was revisited on a regular basis. And I haven't seen that with the process here. But I understand because of the whole COVID thing, it just totally disrupted and interrupted the momentum of the process. But we're at a point where I think it's almost a year till tomorrow, from tomorrow, when the Zoom meeting was held, and you've lost momentum. The whole thread of any benefits of the planning process has stopped, essentially. And I think instead of continuing on with it, it would be a good idea to stop, regroup, and think about better community engagement and some other ways that you can fulfill the plan. As I said, I was in the Zoom meeting, and I wasn't very impressed with the process, partly because it was Zoom, but also I didn't think that the questions were very good. You know, it was a lot of solution finding rather than getting to root causes and trying to understand things like, what are the goals for the community for 2050? I did some research. I met with Steve. I looked at the 2050 plan so far. I looked at the 2020 plan. I looked at some of the survey information that's been collected. Less than 10% of the residents so far have responded or participated in the process, which in my mind is not good enough for 100% of the residents to be affected by this plan. I looked at the current plan proposed, and then this is from 2020, and you can see there's a lot less green here. The green is the rural preservation area, which, of course, I'm biased because I lived that way. But I guess my goal, my question for Steve was, what are the goals? I mean, do we have a target green preservation residential area that we want to actually keep? Do we have plans to work with farmers so that their property, which is their retirement, doesn't immediately fall into warehouse developments or subdivisions? I don't particularly like the warehouses that have been popping up along the Holy Hill area, but according to this, that was always planned, so that's okay. There is a need for a balance of industrial, commercial, residential, but developers leave, architects and planners leave, and the residents stay, and we have to live with what has been dreamed up. One of the things I noticed, and this is, I'm bouncing all over the place, I know. One of the things I noticed in the process is that they're not really talking about adjacencies of communities or neighborhoods in the questions that they're asking. And that's really important because you can't just stop an industrial area and then start a residential area. There needs to be some type of transition buffer area, and that doesn't seem to have been addressed in this go-around in the plan. It is, it is an actionable, it is a goal, and it was discussed in the 2020 plan, but that plan lacks anything that's got a strategic way of fulfilling goals. It's a laundry list of stuff, and it's a good basis, but it doesn't take it to the next step of strategy and tactics to make something happen, which is why I think a lot of the things in that plan haven't been touched. So perhaps there's a new way that we need to look at this planning process and rethink and regroup. Let me just make sure if I had anything else. I'm also not a particular, a particular fan of these cluster conservation mechanisms. They don't exist in normal rural life, except when a village pops up. We already are a village. Because they're clustered close together, they need sewer lines. They can't just exist on septic fields because you need a certain amount of space. So it seems like it's a contradiction. And if you do end up having sewer lines, then growth grow or happens more quickly, and the likelihood of the rural preservation area will be diminished. So that's just one little thing here. The other thing I noticed is that on the projections from the 2020, they were off by 30%. According to that document, we should have 7,000 more people in our community right now, but it was wrong. And if we are basing things off projections, it would be good to know how accurate they are and compare actual versus projected. And today, we're in a different situation because demographics are diminishing. Older people, boomers are moving on, and people are having less kids. So there's a change in the way demographics is growing, or going, I should say. Let me see, one other thing, sorry. Yeah, so planning is a great opportunity for outreach to the citizens of a community, and I would strongly encourage the trustees, the staff, anyone elected, to possibly rethink the way in which your outreach has occurred. I mean, the ways, the methods in which you notified citizens obviously hasn't worked because only 1,800 people showed up or participated. There are many, many ways, you know, of competing information out there these days, but because of social media and just people are busy and it's crazy right now with everything that's going on. But you have to go out and you have to actively get a hold of people in where they live or where they work. You can't just passively sit by. And one of the benefits of a planning process is that people can come together, and if they understand what a planning process is and how it benefits them, it'll become a more natural thing, and it should happen, it should be a constant thing. It shouldn't be a once every 10-year thing. I mean, there is no momentum once every 10 years. It should be a, there should be a series of committees that participate. There's many committees and groups of people in this community who probably hadn't even thought about it, but a, I think, a communication plan and a active reaching out to citizens is required now. And if 75% of the money has already been spent, take the last 25% and figure out a way to do some community engagement rather than continue on the way in which we have been going. I think that's really all I have to say. I would like to help, but I also don't know what that looks like, and my family and I have to eat as well, so I really don't know what, what needs to hap... I mean, I do have plenty of ideas about what could be done because I've done it, but I don't know what the goals are. It's not really clear from reading the information that's been presented. We have lots of stats, but what are we trying to do? I mean, what are we trying to do? What do we want to be in 2050? Do we want to have 45% still of green space and rural lifestyle? Or are we more industrial? Are we more retail? What are we? I think we need to ask those kinds of questions rather than, should we use cluster conservation subdivisions over here? Which, that's a solution. That's not a, trying to get to, what are we? Those are my remarks.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming forward.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for a citizen input or public appearance? There is no one else. We can go to consent agenda. Board?
Turn. Now it's my turn. I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C as presented.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? Do roll call vote, please. Can we share?
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Listing one item, Item A, Department of Public Works Building Tax Increment District Feasibility Study. To give us some more background and information on that, we can start with the village administrator, and then we have representation from Aylers here with Jonathan Schatz.
All right, thank you. As you recall, at our last meeting, we had an initial overview of the feasibility of using a tax increment district to help offset some of the costs of the infrastructure related to the new public works facility at the proposed site on Donjes Bay in Wazaki. Based on the numbers that we had and that particular site plan, the analysis came back with a negative response, that the TID was not feasible, that the expenses related to preparing the site, both for the public works facility and for development, would not pencil out in terms of the TID being able to afford the expected contribution towards the infrastructure. We also stated at that meeting that we were going to go back and work with our engineering consultants, Grave, as well as our financial advisors, Aylers, to see if there were some other options that we could pursue. What we have with is an option that would reduce the size of the land purchase in the scenario that Aylers ran numbers on. Grave located the DPW site as well as a site for potential development, only on two parcels of the three that the village board had authorized purchase agreements on. Those two would be the Roxy Canipal property and the Kraus property. The revised site plan would not include the GFL property. So that, not purchasing the, that third property reduces the cost by over $1 million. In addition, moving the site further towards Donjes Bay and eliminating that third parcel reduces the length of the sewer and water and roads that are necessary to go back all the way to the corner of that site, and that reduces the costs of, in the range of $500,000 to $1 million. And then finally, and the biggest component is related to the grading. If you've been out on that site, you know that there's a lot of grade changes. The corner of Wazaki and Donjes Bay is very high. The site where we're talking about locating the DPW facility is very low, and the grading cost to treat that all as one site was about $4.5 million. So under the proposal that we've been working on with Grave and with Aylers, that Kraus site would be privately developed. We have had conversations with a couple of developers who are interested in that, and they would grade it separately from the DPW site. So that would take the $4.5 million of grading expenses off of the village, and the developer would grade the Kraus site in order to meet the needs that they're looking at for development. So that's kind of an overview of what we've done with the site to come up with these numbers, and then based on that, Jonathan Schatz from Aylers is here to walk through the new analysis with the revised site plan. We also do have Grave Consultants who are here. If you, after Jonathan goes through the numbers, if you do have some additional questions on the site plan or what that would look like or how it would work, they are here to answer those questions as well.
Great, thanks, Steve. So the first part of this presentation is very much the same as what you saw two weeks ago, as far as the initial concept in which the TID 9 would be created sort of adjacent to the DPW garage and be zoned for industrial development. And the village would still finance the purchase of the sites, which, which the purchase price would be reduced under the plan that Steve just talked about, where the overall site is smaller now. And, and so that, that's approximately just over $3 million in our new, in our new numbers. Public improvements to the overall area as well to establish the infrastructure, and that expense, again, is, is less than what we showed two weeks ago. Now it's about 4.2 million all in for that. So the village, the village debt within the TID would be paid back through increment generated by the developments. And again, this plan really only looks at what the, the non-DPW costs, the DPW costs, you know, are going to be paid through, by the village, the non-DPW portion of it to be paid by, by TID increment. The next slide shows, so again, same idea here. This would be an industrial TID where at least 50% is zoned and suitable for industrial development. It's a 20-year TID. We had just over 100 acres in the last plan. This plan shows about 67 acres, where 30 is for the DPW garage site, and the remaining 37 approximately is a developable industrial, for industrial uses. And, and again, this plan shows that the cash flow would, would work, and we'll look at that closer. So next slide shows the project list and the updated costs for the different uses. So public improvements for the sites, utilities, contingency, cost of land acquisition. We had included a Pago incentive in the eligible project list, and then, of course, professional services. The smaller site also means less value being developed. So what we did was, in the initial plan, we had three buildings being developed. In this plan, we have two buildings, one larger 416,000 square foot building and one smaller 100,000 square foot building. So total development at about $25.8 million, and projecting that this development would occur within the next two years. Next is just an increment projection and not, not using any economic inflation or tax rate change, just kind of keeping it flat to get a conservative picture of what increment could be generated from that much value, showing 430,000, just over $430,000 of increment being generated each year after the full build-out. So in order to finance the upfront infrastructure and the land costs, we have two issues being considered here. So the first one would be a bond of just over 5, $4.5 million, and that would, that would cover the site improvements, the building of the road and so on, but not include any of that grading on the developable sites that Steve mentioned. And then we also have a $3.1 million anticipation note that would be to finance the land acquisition. And the key to it all, the cash flow for, for this proposed TID 9 shows that unlike the last version, if you go kind of, it's left to right here, revenues under the orange, expenditures in the middle under the gray, and then the sort of how it balances out on the right, that annual, you see that it's mostly in the black, but most importantly, that cumulative balance in the middle there, all in the black showing that we have a cash flow that works and would be able to pay, the amount of revenue generated would be able to pay off the obligations within the district's life. So finally, just again, this sort of sample timeline for how this could work if, if the village board chooses to move forward, we could have approval for this at the, we have May 2nd, a village board meeting. We'd have, have to hold a plan commission and initial joint review board prior to that on April 11th, and then a final JRB meeting on May 16th. So that's kind of the soonest we could push through. So, if there's any questions on the update here, happy to entertain.
Board, questions? Trustee Kaminsky? Your microphone.
What happens if we don't approve it tonight because we still have questions that maybe you can't satisfy? I mean directional questions. Should we go this route?
Sure. It would just...
Which is back and...
However, internal processes get affected.
Well, yeah, I think that it probably affects more of the other processes in the village than, than in particular the creation of the TID or the issuance of the debt. There are a lot of moving pieces with all of this, and I truly understand a lot of questions yet. And I think that in order to, if, if one of the goals is for the village to continue to work towards starting construction of the public works site this year, there are multiple processes that are underway that I think that we have to keep moving towards a decision point that all comes together around May. So for example, we can't close on the, on the purchase of the properties until we have an approval of a tax increment district and that decision taking place. We, we have coming forward at the, at the April 4th meeting of the village board, an approval to issue debt to purchase the property. So a lot of these things are all coming together in April and May. We can't start, we can't issue bid documents. I guess we could, but it'd be, there'd be some concerns about issuing bid documents if we don't have a, have closure on the land. So there's a, there's, there's a lot of moving parts and moving pieces. I guess that, that my recommendation for the board would be to approve going forward with the process. You're not, and with that action, approving a tax increment district until May 2nd. But this is one of the processes that has some requirements for public notice and, and public hearings that have to be complied with, that do take some time. And I think if, if we don't get that direction tonight, it, it could impact the ability to get all of these other pieces to fall into place. If you don't approve it, we'll still do everything we can to try to get all those pieces to fall into place according to that timeline, but, but this is one of the key ones that, that's required to make, to get some of these other decisions made and, and to keep the process moving forward.
I guess I have some, probably some questions that have nothing to do with Aylers and moving forward with this. So what you're saying is we can keep moving this forward, but I am not committed to this personally at this point, because I still am like, okay, now we're down to the two properties, and I assume the 37 acres is the Kraus site. and I assume the 37 acres is the Kraus site, correct? That all of a sudden the developer, if he does come in and develop, is going to do all that grading himself, which means we'll get less money for that property obviously because that's going to be paid for by somebody, correct? And, uh, does, do we have a firm commitment that he's going to come in and buy that and develop on that? No.
No. And that, the developer agreement is one of the other pieces that has to be completed before we close on the property.
Okay. Because then my thought is if he decides not to develop, then we still have the grading problem and the grading issue that the next developer might not want to pick up the multimillion dollar tab on. So I mean, either way, I just am not feeling real comfortable with the way this shoe fits right now. And I might be in two weeks, but I'm just not right now. What, I mean, maybe in.
But we know that with the, putting the grading and the cost of both properties on, the tid won't work.
I know. That's why I'm saying, is it the tid we still want or do we just want to buy our 30 acres? Or are we that committed to the tid?
It offsets some of the costs for infrastructure in the, in the roads and in, uh, in the sewer and water.
Okay, that's where I, I need to circle back on that, I think, before I'd feel comfortable with it.
And actually, if I, if I could, one of the questions trustee Kaminsky just asked, and I think this is an important clarification. So again, the whole reason for doing the tid is to, to help pay for, um, some of those, some of those expenses, um, that we would have to incur anyways, uh, to put the public works facility in. And, um, I don't know if we can go back to that.
Page four.
Yeah, on, on, uh, one of the slides here, it shows the, uh, the project costs and, um, uh, so out of, uh, out of those, um, public improvements, um, let's see, I'm not sure actually if this does show it, but, but about, uh, about 40, 45% of the, uh, of the improvements would pay, be paid for, uh, out of general obligation borrowing and, and the tax levy, levy supported debt, um, the other 55 to 60% would be paid for out of the tax increment district. It's broken up proportionally based on the acreage, 37 acres in the tid, 30 acres on the, on the DPW site.
Other questions? Trustee Jan Miller.
Um, we didn't, you didn't run a comparison for us to take a look at. I'm kind of in, uh, trustee Kaminsky's camp because we do need one property. I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not positive which one the Krausi plot is. Is that the one on the corner?
Yes.
Of Donja Bay?
Yes.
And that's the one we want to build on?
No. We want the middle one.
The middle one?
Mm-hmm.
Could we not just buy the middle one?
You would still have the infrastructure cost to bring in the roads and the sewer and the water, which this tid is offsetting 2,175,000 dollars of.
But we'd have a reduced, um.
No.
Purchase?
You have a reduced purchase price, but you would still have the public improvements on site costs.
2.1 you said, right?
Yes.
2.1, right. And how much is the, the land, not the Krausi land, but the, the land we want to put it on the second property?
Kraus property? Um, well, that would, the purchase price for that, um, was slightly over 2 million dollars, but that would be a pass through to the village, to the developer. Developer would purchase the land from the village or, um, or potentially we would assign the purchase agreement to the developer. The, the, the village would not, would not hold the, um, that parcel of land. Village attorney could probably explain it better than I can.
I, I, I think your question was what is the purchase price of the middle piece?
Yes, thank you.
Which is 2 million.
Okay. So 2 million and why couldn't the developer just buy the Krausi property themselves and then be responsible for the water sewer?
Well, that, that is effectively what would happen under a development agreement, uh, approach is we would just assign the offer, uh, on that parcel to the developer. They would close on it and buy it. Uh, the reality is, is that a developer who was going to buy that parcel likely would then come to us to create a tid to pay for some of those infrastructure costs that they'd have to do.
Possibly.
Possibly.
But they, we wouldn't be paying for sewer and water costs on that property. We're, we're paying for, or what the tid is paying for is what it brings to the site that we want to put the public works department on and it can be shared across the tid. Otherwise you can spread it to the taxpayers through bonding and borrowing.
Further questions? Trustee Miller.
Yeah, this, uh, the assumption is that there's two buildings going up in the next 18 months, year, 18 months, something like that by the end of 23. Yeah. I mean, how sure are we of? And, and the reason I ask that is that that's kind of critical to making this tid work because you really only have two years buffer from what I'm reading here.
That's based upon the conversations with the developers and with the understanding that if we go forward with this, that we would require a development agreement that would, um, include guarantees that, that construction did take place according to that timeline.
Did include the guarantees or we'd have a similar one like tid seven where we'd have some guarantees of payment?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Right. That, I feel better about that.
Trusty Kaminsky.
A follow-up to what Rick just said, because that's kind of my concern too. There's so many unknowns right now with the world we're living in. I mean, there is on any given day, but with the economy doing what it's doing now, with inflation doing what it's doing now, with supply chain issues doing what they're doing now, when, when does this developer think he's going to break ground? And what if he goes bankrupt? Then we technically are left kind of holding the bag, aren't we? Am I wrong? Because we've had this happen with developments in my, what, 10-plus years on this board with, with different subdivisions and that, changing hands and being delayed and, but that they weren't tids.
No.
But this time we're holding the financial bag, correct? I'm just asking. Am I correct on that or not?
We're holding the value of whatever the land was purchased for.
But if nobody wants to develop it, there goes the tit if the developer goes south for whatever reason.
Right. I mean, worst case scenario at that point is that you then at, at the end of the project, look to the taxpayers to make up whatever costs have been expended that we haven't otherwise covered through development at that point. Obviously it, you know, depending on when development takes place, how much development, all of that is going to affect that. Um, you know, there are things that we potentially could look at trying to do, uh, to, to further protect us in those circumstances. Um, you know, whether or not the developer here would agree to some of those things, I don't know. Um, but, but there are things we can try to, to address those issues as well.
And to address some of those concerns, we, we have had TIFs and we have started TIFs in difficult economic times and all of them have been successful, all of them. It doesn't mean they all will be, but our, our track record is good. It's very good.
Only in some cases. No, I don't disagree with that.
Painfully because they've all been successful. It's not any pain in it. It's been successful.
Yes, but it's taken a lot more time.
TIF six, which was the biggest questionable one, including TIF six.
Exactly.
And we've turned around TIF four in 2008, which was the last big dec- economic downturn and made it profitable in 2008 through to 2012. When nobody else was selling property, when nobody else was developing land, we were. So we have a good track record. What you need to decide as part of this decision of going to TIF or moving this forward is are you willing to put on the tax rolls or to the residents the 2.175 million dollars through borrowing to cover the infrastructure costs of us just putting a building in that middle land and not offsetting it with some additional development? Is that what your choice is? That's your choice. Either you, you encompass that through the TIF to offset that cost or you pass it on to the residents. It's that, it's that black and white to me, A and B. Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, so the net result of this is that if we would purchase one piece of property, we'd still have to put the infrastructure in. If we purchase both properties to a tid, the net result is that we will be 2.17 million, 2.1 million dollars in tid money to help with the infrastructure for us.
Correct. Correct. Exactly. If, if the, um, without the tid, we pay 100% of the costs of the.
Without that, we would pay an additional 2.1 million dollars in infrastructure.
Correct. This is, the tid is, is covering a portion of those infrastructure costs. So it is, does, I guess to, to expand on, on the village attorney's explanation of the worst case scenario, the worst case scenario if the tid would fail, we would, we would be paying the same amount that we would if we never created the tid.
Further questions? Trustee Myers.
Uh, Steve, you talked about two developers. Is that correct?
I, I've, um, yes, yes.
Thank you. One of them you identify as Kellers. Is that correct?
That's, that's one of them that we've been talking to, yes.
Who was the other one?
Uh, the other developer that I've had recent conversations on this topic is Dickman. There, there were, I believe, five developers that we've reached out to and, uh, and, uh, had some initial conversations. Those are the, the two that I've talked to most recently.
In regard to, uh, the amount of acreage that they needed?
Um, it wasn't, they were looking at what was available. Um, yeah.
Nothing further.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? Are you looking for a motion to move this forward?
Um, yes.
I'll make a motion to move forward the Department of Public Works building tax incremental financing district as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Nay.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any further presentation? Next item on the agenda is public hearings, which we have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. Public hearing item A, Caitlin Leterno and Kevin Shodran located at North 120 West 15515 Freistadt Road. Uh, historic designation pursuant to sections 26.06 of the Germantown Municipal Code. Give us some more background and information on this public hearing. We'll turn the meeting over to our community development director, Jeff Retzloff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as you indicated, Caitlin Leterno and Kevin Shodran, uh, owners are seeking approval of the village's historic designation for their property, the former Brown Farm. Uh, it's 2.1 acre parcel located, uh, at the intersection of Pilgrim Road and Freistadt Road. Uh, the farmhouse was built in 1858. That's good. Um, the barn and silo are estimated to have been built, uh, sometime between 1858 and 1912. Uh, Stefan and Rosina Meyer Braun, uh, thought to be the original owners and residents, uh, purchased the land back in 1845. Uh, the historic significance identified in the application, uh, is that the buildings illustrate an important aspect of Germantown's history and the buildings are architecturally significant for the area. The, uh, historic designation program is a voluntary one. Uh, the historic designation itself serves as an overlay zoning district. Uh, the designation is intended to protect, uh, the structures and sites having historic or special, um, interest character and a certificate of appropriateness is required from the village historic preservation, uh, commission prior to any improvements or alterations of the structures or site. Uh, the process involves three basic steps. Uh, the historic preservation commission considers an application, uh, and takes action with a requirement of a two-third majority vote to, uh, approve and forward on the, uh, request to the plan commission who in turn, uh, also, uh, considers the application and takes a vote requiring a two-third majority to approve and pass on to the village board. Uh, both of those steps have been taken. Both historic preservation commission and the plan commission have approved, uh, the recommendation to approve the, uh, request. And finally, the village board, uh, holds a public hearing and takes action with again a two-third majority vote requirement to approve the historic designation. The, uh, public hearing is a requirement due to the fact that the request, uh, is a zoning change. With that, we can open the public hearing.
Okay. I will then open the public hearing by stating a notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the village of Germantown Village Board at the Germantown Village Hall located on Mequon Road in Germantown on Monday, March 21st at 7:00 PM or later. The purpose of said hearing is to hear any and all parties, their attorneys or agents for or against the following application filed by the applicant for a historic designation pursuant to section 26.06 of the Germantown Municipal Code on the following described property. The applicant is Caitlin Leterno and Kevin M. Shodran, property owners, and the property is located at North 120 West 15515 Freistadt Road. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward to speak for or against the, uh, application for historic designation on this property? Anyone wishing to come forward to speak for or against? One last time, is there anyone that wishes to come forward to speak for or against the application for zoning change for historic designation on forementioned property? Not? This public hearing is now closed. That takes care of all public hearings on tonight's agenda. We can then go to new business, starting with new business item A, ordinance 03-2022, amend the official zoning map and zoning code and adopt a historic structure designation for the buildings located at North 120 West 15515 Freistadt Road for Caitlin Leterno and Kevin Shodran.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, so, um, this obviously came through the historic preservation commission. Uh, Caitlin is one of the members, uh, on that commission. So if you have any questions or want any further, uh, historical information, um, we can bring her up. Um, this, this property, 1858, it's probably one of the oldest, um, oldest houses in Germantown and, uh, has been kept up great. And I think it was your father that, that did a lot of the renovation. Is that correct? And it, it looks, uh, it's, it's very well kept. And I think this is a, a, a great, uh, addition to our historic, uh, properties in Germantown. It really represents, uh, Germantown nicely.
Further discussion? The only thing I would add is I always appreciate, uh, the background and history as we talked in the plan commission. I enjoy reading, uh, all the historical facts. Uh, I love the idea that the land was purchased in 1845, three years before, uh, even Wisconsin became a state. And that's when one of the first offerings of land in this area, uh, were presented by the federal government and were then purchased within two years after the initial offering. So this piece of property is part of that initial offering, which is the history of why we are here today. So I, I like that, uh, that fact very much and I do appreciate the way you keep up that property. It's always neat as a pin and, and when you drive by it, it's, uh, it really is eye appealing. So thank you for all the hard work you put into it and for, uh, and making it, uh, you know, this historic designation to help show what history was in Germantown back in the 1800s. Any other discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming. Next item under new business is item B, ordinance 04-2022, repealing and amending chapter 13.37 relating to the wastewater measurement and sampling, elimination of the summer sewer credit for the second quarter billing and change to third quarter summer sewer credit calculation. Give us more information and background on this. We have the supervisor of our sewer department, Mr. Tim Zimmerman. Tim?
So this was brought forth to public works, um, in part due to the Tyler Munis, uh, utility billing module that's currently being implemented. Um, we want to have two full quarters of, you will pseudo billing where we're running it through the new system as well as the current system. Last summer, this sewer credit was a nightmare to calculate because the current billing program totally crashed when trying to calculate it. So we went through and we looked at some data, um, moving into the new Tyler Munis system and we found that the summer sewer credit for quarter two, it's very. the summer sewer credit for quarter two, it's very seldom even implemented due to nobody's using enough water to actually qualify for it. So why go through the headache of having to calculate it? As was presented at Public Works and Highways Committee, um, this is not a normal practice in the state of Wisconsin to offer these summer sewer credits. Most municipalities offer the option of a irrigation meter. Um, however, the Public Works Committee, um, agreed that they wanted to continue the practice for quarter three only, which is where the more significant, um, amount of outdoor water usage occurs. And to recalculate formula based on what's shown on my backup for you tonight, um, we're not increasing the amount of percentage. We're keeping that at 15% the way it was in the old code. The only difference will be that in order to qualify for the credit, um, a residential property has to use a minimum of 11,000 gallons. And the reason for that is MMSD bills us 11,000 gallons per residential customer because it's billed formulary, not on actual volume metric.
Questions? Trustee Rick Miller?
I did think of one question, uh, after the Public Works meeting, and that is the, uh, the users, the water or wastewater utility users that have the private wells. How, how has that been calculated or has it been calculated or don't they get a credit?
Their bill is already estimated and, um, kind of based on an old EPA formula that's never been changed. So, you know, the husband and wife that live together and they're on an estimated bill, probably pay an accurate amount compared to somebody who has five kids, you know, and use a lot more water because it's not actually based on residential occupancies.
Based on this 11,000?
We're being billed from MMSD on that 11,000 because that's just the formulary they use because they can't, there's no way they could bill every individual residential property based on consumption. There'd be no way to calculate that bill across the entire service area.
So for those homes that are, that are in that situation where they have private wells, they, they aren't even eligible for a?
No, because they're, they're generating their own water.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not relevant at that point. We give them an estimated sewer bill simply based on known data volumetric per quarter.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Jan Miller?
And this was just for residential, not, um, industrial?
Correct. It's only applies to R1, which is, um, single-family and duplex residential only.
Okay. Thank you.
The only, the only other thing I would add is there is a corrected version on the deus before you, um, that just clarifies that 11,000 dollar, or 11,000 gallon figure, uh, that was there. So that would be the version we'd seek to have approval of.
Need a motion?
So are we annexing the sewer credit altogether?
No.
Just for?
We're ending it for quarter two.
Okay.
And we'll still have it for quarter three, the same way it was always been calculated. But the basis for the credit will begin at 11,000 gallons, not at the differential as it was in the past.
Dennis, did you make the motion? I didn't hear a motion. Do you hear a motion? Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Question. So before it was, it was given to the second quarter and then also to the third quarter. And with the elimination of the second quarter, you're refiguring or using a different calculation to figure the third quarter?
Yes, we're going to use Q1 and Q2 volumetric, whereas the old formula used Q4. So you're going back into a prior year. And then you're using Q4 of the prior year and Q, Q1 of the present year to calculate it for quarters two and three.
Okay. So could a, a, a resident that is on the sewer and water utility come back and say, you've now raised my sewer rates?
No, because we're not raising the rate.
But will they pay a little bit more?
Their bill may go up. Their bill may, may go up because maybe they're using a little bit more in Q2. But the data just not, did not support continuing to give the credit in quarter two. There were so few houses that actually qualified for it.
Okay. If I could clarify, I think, uh, and, and just to expand on, on, uh, the superintendent's, uh, explanation there, to the effect that it would impact anyone's, um, and what anyone sees on their bills, it would be, um, any property owners that would, that fit into this category that receive a credit, that do some more extensive irrigating in the early part of the year, um, April, May, June, which again, I think what the data was showing, what the analysis was showing is that's pretty limited. But I wouldn't want to say that, that there's no one who does irrigation, uh, during that time of the year. And if they are using a lot of water for irrigation during April, April, May, and June, they could see an increase in their, in, in what they get on their bill for that quarter.
For the average resident, it really shouldn't be, uh, significant or be known as you increased my cost for sewer.
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Next item under new business is item C, Century Lane Assessment for Right-of-Way Acquisition in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,000.
Motion to approve new business item C.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Any additional information, Director? Anything to add? Sure, but some, maybe some people at home don't. This is for the reconstruction of Century Lane and gaining some right of way that had been needed to be gained in order for that road repair to, to go forward.
Correct. There's two parcels, two property owners that we need to land from, and, um, they've requested that we have it assessed to determine a value, and that's what this is involving.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Okay. Great. Any further discussion? Trustee Myers?
So you said there's two properties. Is that, uh, the one that owns the, the biggest property?
Yes, the, um, the, the Rat, Mr. Ratkey, that property owns like four parcels that are actually that we need to get right away from. And there's only one other, uh, individual resident, um, Mr. Howard's closer to 145 that we need to get right away from.
He's the one probably on the?
First property in north of, first property in north of 145 on the east side.
Right. Did we give them a, an amount of what, do we have a, an amount that was given to them as to what we thought their land was worth?
We did a rough, a rough valuation based on the current, um, property tax levy for the land and the acreage that we'd want. And, um, and they also still with that, they requested that we have an assessment done by a qualified assessor.
Okay, so we're going to have a qualified one and then, and then they can have a qualified one themselves if they disagree, correct?
If they disagree, yes.
Usually after that, um, goes through, depending on their particular part, it could go to Circuit Court.
It could, but I don't, I don't, in discussing with this individual, I don't believe that it's, it's headed in that direction. He's looking to make sure he gets a fair price. There's, uh, some siblings involved in it, and he, he is being requested by them basically to get an assessment done.
And, um, basically speaking, if they did take it to Circuit Court, we still could proceed with this, with this, uh, going through this procedure for the doing the roads. I, I think Brett could answer that, but?
Yes.
Correct. If we got to that point, it, we would likely just continue with the project.
Thank you.
Further discussion? No further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Director. Next item under new business is item D, Presentation on Potential Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Richfield for Sewer and Water Services. To, uh, give us some information and presentation on this, we'll turn the meeting over to our village attorney.
Going to be all of us at, at one point here. I get the pleasure of starting. Uh, so we're just going to go through at least initially some background. Effectively in, uh, late 2019, Richfield staff had approached, uh, village staff, Germantown staff, uh, to inquire about providing water and sewer service, uh, to an area in Richfield. Uh, just to kind of orient everybody, um, the area in Richfield that we're talking about is here in orange, uh, kind of by the, uh, red pointer there. Um, the village, our current, uh, kind of industrial park, the Briggs, uh, building, uh, the building of the south is in light blue. And then, uh, most of what is the Freistadt District, uh, as we call it in the 2050 plan, uh, is in the, uh, red or pinkish color here, uh, at the bottom. Uh, the request, uh, from Richfield was to serve, uh, what they call their northeast corridor, uh, which is that area that is in the orange, as we just discussed. Uh, in October of 2020, uh, this board approved an MOU with Richfield that authorized the, a preliminary feasibility exploration, uh, and also a, um, traffic impact analysis for, uh, the Interstate 41, uh, in the area. And then in fall of 2021, uh, this board likewise passed a second MOU, uh, related to the increasing of the height, uh, for the water tower that was put in, uh, just north of the Briggs building. Uh, the northeast corridor, uh, a little bit of a zoom in here, uh, basically straddles, uh, the, uh, area between, uh, the Interstate I-41 and, uh, uh, Highway 175, uh, to the west. Uh, there are a couple of parcels on the, on the west side of 175 there. Um, the initial plan, uh, involved, uh, potentially up to 177 acres of business park or light industrial type buildings, 135 acres of what they classify interchange commercial, uh, about 70 acres of single-family or small-scale commercial, and then about 60 acres of, uh, what they classified as mixed residential. In the interest of kind of answering some of the questions that we've had before about, you know, is this just getting the toe, uh, into the water, uh, so to speak? And then we're going to, uh, end up having to serve more. Um, there's a couple of factors that would potentially limit that, uh, expansion beyond the area that we're talking about. Uh, number one, you have the subcontinental divide. Uh, that is the line in red, uh, that you see there. Uh, the area that we are, uh, talking about, uh, is kind of centered, uh, around that blue dot, uh, that's there towards the, uh, upper third of the, um, of the, the image. Um, that subcontinental divide, uh, does make, uh, providing water service, uh, to the other side a little bit more difficult. Uh, it is not the full process that we all can maybe watch Waukesha go through because they are fully outside of the intercontinent, uh, intercontinental divide or subcontinental divide, I should say. Um, but because they are, uh, a full community that straddles the line, they have the ability to go beyond that. Uh, but it does still require some level of approval. It's just not as complex as, as what Waukesha went through. Uh, likewise, MMSD has, uh, likely some role in what they would approve in terms of a potential service area. Uh, if you look, uh, just, uh, in the area here next to the blue dot, um, that area is part of what's called the Cedar Creek, um, uh, floodway, not floodway, but the, uh, the area of influence of floodshed, that's their watershed, uh, that, uh, is, uh, included there. Uh, the Cedar Creek, uh, watershed is in turn part of the, uh, Milwaukee River Basin. Uh, basically everything, uh, east of that red line is within the Milwaukee River Basin. Everything to the west is not. Um, again, not a diehard, absolutely going to be a, you know, a, a prohibition. Uh, there are instances where MMSD does go outside of the basins that they otherwise typically cover. Um, but it is just an additional regulatory hurdle that might be necessary that's there. Uh, and then lastly, uh, Richfield's code, uh, does provide if they were going to have any public works project that is located, uh, west of, uh, 175, uh, that, that public works project would, uh, be subject to, uh, having a, uh, public referendum, a vote, uh, to that, um, which would, uh, obviously, uh, presumably be difficult to obtain as well. Um, recognizing of course, just as with the other two, it, it, it's a hurdle. Um, code provisions can be changed. Uh, and, you know, whether there's the political will or not in Richfield to ever do that, I have no idea. Um, they are not my client, but, uh, uh, code provisions can be changed. So, uh, certainly service could be expanded beyond the area that we're talking about, but it, it wouldn't be without some challenges, uh, that are there. Uh, likewise, the Freistadt District, uh, just to kind of give a little bit of a, an overview, uh, in essence, uh, part of the development here and, and my colleagues here, we're, are going to talk a little bit more in depth about what's going on here. Uh, but certainly one of the things within the IGA is that, uh, sewer and water would be run through the area. Uh, you see kind of the two potential routes there, one in red, one in blue, uh, that it could potentially follow, which would open up potential development. But again, just want to highlight that so that as we move through, you have kind of the basis of how all of this fits together. When we talk about the specific, uh, IGA, uh, which I believe was in your packet, uh, for all of you to re, review, uh, in terms of general terms, uh, in short, Germantown agrees to provide service to the full northeast corridor. Um, there is, uh, one exception to that if I just go back here, um, to the northeast corridor, uh, as we've kind of done some additional work, there are some high areas on the, kind of this little sliver here. Um, it, it's unlikely that, you know, unless they put in a booster pump or something else, that, that, that area would be able to be served. Um, so it, it likely isn't the full corridor, uh, but the, uh, most of the corridor would potentially be served. Um, Germantown agrees to pay the material costs to upsize the pipe, uh, for any area where we would, uh, need that. So basically through the Freistadt District, we would upsize to the extent that we believe we need to, to serve our area. Um, and likewise, we split the cost, uh, 50/50, uh, where we acquire actual physical right of way. Presumably our, our utilities will want inroads through the, the Freistadt area. Um, so the, the cost of the acquisition of that right of way would be 50/50. Um, village, uh, Germantown would pay to put in the road itself, however. Lastly, Germantown owns and operates the system. Richfield, on the other hand, uh, is going to create a TID to pay for the infrastructure. Uh, they're going to pay all costs associated with the installation for their service. Uh, that would include both the preliminary installation for the areas that they plan to serve immediately, uh, as well as any additional installations that they might have as they look to fill out the rest of the north, northeast corridor that they have. Uh, likewise, uh, Richfield agrees to assist us with any collection of charges as necessary. So if we need to put things on tax bills when they go unpaid, those types of concerns. Uh, beyond that, uh, within, uh, the, uh, specifics as it relates to service provisions, uh, as I just indicated, the initial service is thought to be to what would be the TID area, uh, which is mostly going to consist of office, light industrial warehousing or logistics development. This is the area that we've kind of talked about, that the Hillwood Group has, uh, under contract, uh, and is looking at building, as we understand it, a, uh, approximately 1 million square foot building, uh, that would be part of that. Um, service is, as I indicated, authorized, uh, for the currently existing uses within the, um, district as well. Uh, but if there are additional uses or new uses of any property, uh, that that use would be reasonably approved by Germantown, um, that we talked about last meeting. We couldn't just say no just because we felt like saying no. We'd have to have a basis as to why we're saying no. Uh, but it does give us some ability to have a review process as we go through there. The development itself, uh, would pay, uh, Germantown's water and sewer impact fees, uh, as well as our connection charges, and also pay for the inspection fees, uh, that, uh, we would charge in order as, as things get put in. Um, you know, new lateral gets inspected, those types of things. Lastly, there is a private well escrow that was negotiated. That escrow puts $50,000 into an escrow for the life of the TID, uh, which would be used to, uh, deepen or replace, uh, a well pump if water levels are lower for the properties within a half mile of the, uh, well there that's put in just north of the Briggs building. Uh, lastly, both parties agreed to work to secure all of the necessary approvals that may be necessary. That would include, um, MMSD in terms of sewer area, uh, DNR, um, and, and so forth. Terms of specific terms, uh, just to highlight as it relates to both water and sewer service. On sewer service, the connection would go through the Freistadt District, uh, and connect ultimately at and connect ultimately at the intersection of Freistad and Golden Dale Road. That's where we have utilities currently. They would be limited to a maximum flow of .7 million gallons per day. And Richfield customers would pay 120% of the rate that Village of Germantown customers would pay. As it relates to water service, that actually will be a looped connection. There will be a connection that comes from the kind of current terminus in Richfield Road, or Rockfield, it should be Rockfield Road, that's a typo, from Rockfield Road to the west to connect into the service area in Richfield. It would then loop through the service area there and then follow the sewer route down through the Freistad district, connecting again at that Freistad and Golden Dale intersection. Maximum flow there would be 1.10 million gallons per day, recognizing that there's typically some losses that are associated with water versus sewer if you're, you know, producing things, you know, those types of concerns. Richfield customers would pay 100% of the rate as it's set by the PSC. We don't have too much control over that. That is a regulated industry. And so with that, going to turn it over to Mr. Tycheck for an analysis of our engineering terms.
Good evening. I thought we'd take a step back and fill it in as far as how we got to this point with the engineering analysis. We've discussed these many times before. I thought we'd just highlight it and so everybody understands how the sanitary sewer flows were calculated, the areas that were used in the analysis and how to get to allowable flow for Richfield. So we get to the beginning, and some things have to come down, so. The last silo came down. That made room for the Briggs building to the right. And at that point, we were working on TID 7's extension of sanitary sewer of Golden Dale for TID 7, and we progressed to keep going up to TID 8. The way the sanitary sewer area was determined and therefore the size and the pipe and capacities, the engineer in form of Ari Smith went and using topographic maps and the elevation of the existing sewer at Golden Dale and Freistad, looking at the distances that the pipe would have to be and frictional losses, they determined the red border area that you see, which would be the serviceable area for the gravity sanitary sewer originating at Golden Dale and Freistad. We assessed the flow rates using the 2050 land use determinations along with those type of zoning and land use. There's flows assigned by acre for that type of use. That would determine the volume of flow out of areas and the acreage that we would be serving. So based on that, we had a pipe system already designed up Golden Dale and how we were going to serve our area in Germantown and what the need for, under request, rather, for Richfield to be served. We did a pipe network back down through the Freistad area and down to Freistad over to Golden Dale. The capacity of the pipe at Freistad and Golden Dale was 5.39 million gallons. Based on that and backing out the flow, we came up with .77 million gallons a day for Richfield. And actually, that wasn't a total volume. Engineering staff, we kept about 25% of the available volume for Germantown, not knowing what all our development would be. As far as the village water, we use the same boundary lines as a sanitary sewer. The water is a pressured pipe and not a gravity pipe. So it's determined by the ground elevation, and we're regulated by a minimum pressure that we have to supply to a type of building. So the highly elevated tank at Rockfield Road and Gateway Crossing was calculated. And as we all know, to serve Richfield and the southwest corner of Germantown at Town Line and Freistad, the tank would have to be raised 35 feet. Fourth engineers calculated the volume of flow for the tank and the surrounding areas. And based on what, again, the 2050 zoning would require for Germantown's use, we came up with a flow that would be allowable for the Village of Richfield to have. There are questions raised about the shallow well versus the original deep sandstone well. Just as some comparisons, trying to put some of this to rest. Village wells 2, 5, and 7 are shallow wells. They've been operating for, be off here a little bit, maybe about 10 or 15 years, I'm guessing. Also, Gales Wells in the same aquifer. That's the same aquifer that well 12 in TID would be in. There have been no problems with those wells operating. And those wells are very uncommon, as we discussed previously. We pretty much lucked out where well 12 was drilled, and we entered and encountered a large system of fractures that will leave the volume of water flow through. Deep wells that we have are 3, 4, and 11. Those wells, 3 and 11, require radiant removal. That is a much deeper well. You're down around 1,200 feet in a sand aquifer where the water does penetrate through very quickly, but very likely requires radiant removal. The next slide, there were questions regarding the private wells in the area. These are the five wells, graphs are the five wells that we monitored. The Raoul Farm, there were three of them along Rockfield Road, and then one in a site just off and south of Bonnywell Road, west of Golden Dale. These wells all recovered 100%. These graphs and recording were stopped before they had full recovery. If they're large, you would see that at that point they had regained their original recovery to within a foot to two feet. The Future Frontage Road, there was another side that Brian had. The Future Frontage Road would start at Holy Hill Road at the entrance to the now self-storage site. In fact, when we were reconstructing Holy Hill Road, we're allowing for that intersection to be constructed. The route is yet to be determined. These are just some routes that we thought would work through the property. Richfield has conducted rock exploration in that area to see if there's any bedrock, excuse me, that would guide where the road and utilities would go. Traffic management was always a question and concern. A traffic study was performed to do analysis of future traffic needs based on growth in both Germantown and Richfield. Wisconsin DOT got involved, and a traffic study was performed. The cost of traffic study was shared between Village of Germantown, Village of Richfield, Washington County, and a private landowner in the Village of Richfield. We decided to build a Holy Hill Road, taking into consideration many of the future traffic volume needs, including installing traffic lights at Golden Dale and Holy Hill Road.
The next section will be on development, and Jeff Retzloff, the Community Development Director, will cover that portion.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to provide some information that kind of fills in some of the gaps, maybe a little bit redundant, but hopefully provide a little bit more detail. The slide on the screen shows the perimeter boundary of the Richfield northeast corridor area, also referred to as the Richfield service area in the IGA. And this particular graphic sort of breaks down the areas that Richfield has projected future development by type. And then I've got a table on the next slide that'll show a little bit more detail, some of the acreage and the projected flows. But it's important to point out, I'm told I need to tell you that there's two revisions that need to be made to this particular graphic. I think as was alluded to earlier by Brian, the commercial area along Highway 167, where he's wiggling the little pointer arrow. That area is subject to a change in topography that makes it difficult to serve. So that area may not be developed and included in future development within the Richfield service area for that reason. And also, the blue mixed residential area on the top, that's about 60 acres in size, I'm sorry, 70 acres in size, that apparently there's a single owner who's built a house and garage on the property that will prohibit the development of that area as was projected for 710 multifamily mixed use, mixed residential type development units. So apparently, that's no longer in the mix. On the next graphic, this is a chart that was taken from a feasibility study or an infrastructure study that was done for the Richfield northeast corridor area. And it does break down by geographic area and acreage, the various business park, the interchange, commercial areas, and so forth. The total area is 443 acres of potential development and/or redevelopment. But as I mentioned, there are restrictions that may prohibit them actually reaching that point. The important point to point out in this case as it relates to the IGA is that bottom part of the table, the far two right columns show that the projected average daily flow generated from all of that development in the Richfield service area is 747,741 gallons per day, or .7 million gallons per day for an average daily maximum. And then the next column, the last column over, has 1.8 million gallons per day of daily peak. That's the amount of flow that was projected to come off of the Richfield service area. Now, when you look at the IGA, what you'll see on page four, under section B2, is a table that shows what the maximum amount of capacity the Village of Germantown is actually going to provide under the agreement. And those values are .4 million gallons per day versus the projected need of .7 million. And on a daily peak, .7 million gallons per day versus the projected 1.8 million gallons. So the agreement basically says, we're not giving you anywhere near what you originally projected you would need for this particular area. So from that standpoint, staff feels comfortable that we have adequate capacity to serve our land on our side that we're projecting through the 2050 plan. So if you can go to the next slide, Brian. This graphic is a portion of the 2050 land use plan, the preliminary plan that's been developed so far. And the area that's been highlighted in red, the boundary line does show a portion of the sewer service and water service areas there. The three colors within that red boundary, the purple is the Holy Hill Gateway area, the orange, to the south is the Freistad district, and the yellow is the Isabel Farms neighborhood. One of the concerns that staff had going back to well over a year and a half, I would call it version 1.0 of this proposal, was is there enough capacity to serve land, projected land use for the Village of Germantown? I think it was Trustee Baum that asked the question, you know, before we give away capacity to Richfield for their needs, do we have enough for our own? And at the time, there were concerns. There were concerns with the sewer capacity along Golden Dale Road. There was a restriction effectively in the size of the pipe. And at the time, we didn't have the 2050 plan developed out to the point that we currently do now. So it was hard to say whether we had enough capacity, you know, back a year and a half ago. Well, that's changed. What's changed? Two things. One, we're rerouting where the flows are coming from, the sewer flows, from the northeast corridor, the Richfield service area, instead of going directly east on Rockfield and Holy Hill and flowing through that restriction on Golden Dale. Now we're sort of going in through the back door down south along the railroad, through the Freistad district, and over to the connection at the Golden Dale at Freistad point. So that restriction in the Golden Dale Road sewer line no longer is an issue. And also, when you look at the, if you can go to the next slide, please. This is a graphic that was worked up by the consultant grave for 2050 plan, their opportunity scenario for land development in that Holy Hill Gateway, Freistad, and Isabel Farms districts. And what we've found is that the amount of development that we're projecting for that area at this point, which may very well change to the lower, this is really a max buildout of urbanized development to take advantage of the sewer service area. We have enough capacity, according to the calculations, to serve our side of US 41 in the 2050 land use plan area, including the Holy Hill Gateway District, which is approximately 520 acres in size, to accommodate enough of the planned mixed use development in the Freistad district, roughly 300 acres, and also to accommodate for the Isabel Farms neighborhood, approximately 94 acres, and the Speaker property, about 38 additional acres, and additional 45 acres on the Coal Farm, west of 41, north of Freistad Road. So from that perspective, staff feels comfortable that there's enough capacity to serve the land uses that we're proposing at this point for the Germantown side under our 2050 plan, in addition to the limitations that we're placing on what we're providing to Richfield for their service area. Thank you.
And I'll take the last section on the financial overview. And the first thing I'll cover is the water and sewer rates and impact on the utility finances. As the village attorney mentioned earlier on, on the sewer utility, the Richfield customers under the agreement would pay the Germantown rates plus 20% premium. So even as our if or when, our utility rates would change in the future, the Richfield customers would pay 20% above and beyond whatever our rates. And what this means for the future is that it would help to delay or prevent any increases in sewer utility rates going forward. Having that money coming in from Richfield would help to delay any needs for any rate increases on the Germantown side. Also wanted to point out, since some of the questions that we received in the listening session and from the public were about paying for infrastructure as it wears out or paying for infrastructure that has already been installed. And the sewer rates are calculated, and the same is true of the water rates, to recover a return on investment that is intended to be used to replace infrastructure as it ages. So when those rates are set, they include a component that should be set aside in reserves or be used to pay debt service to replace infrastructure. So under this agreement, the Richfield customers would be contributing for that infrastructure replacement, both for infrastructure on the Richfield side that provides services only to them, but also for the commonly shared infrastructure on the Germantown side, things like lift stations, interceptor sewers, sewer mains, all through the system. On the water utility side, the rates for Richfield customers would be set by the PSC, the Public Service Commission, and they would be calculated to include a rate of return to replace infrastructure, just like the sewer rates. One of the things, one of the potential benefits for the Germantown residents is creating a broader customer base to help stabilize those utility revenues. And one of the questions I received on this slide over the weekend was if I could give more of a quantitative estimate of what the dollars might look like. And my response to that was that it's really difficult to do that because there's a lot of variables in terms of how many customers end up connecting on the Richfield side, what types of customers they are. There's different rates for residential customers, or different size of commercial industrial customers. But what I can do, and I took a look at some numbers, looking at some different Germantown customers today to get a sense. And I think if you looked at just on one end of the range, just the initial development that Richfield is looking at in the business park, probably looking at a total revenues for the two utilities of approximately $100,000 per year, maybe plus or minus. a hundred thousand dollars per year, maybe plus or minus twenty-five percent in the range of, of what the utilities would receive on an annual ongoing basis. If, on the other hand, Richfield does bill out and, build out and connect to the full extent of the IGA, that would be equivalent to, close to equivalent to some of our largest water and sewer customers. You'd probably be looking at, it's a little bit more difficult predict, to predict on this scale, but somewhere in the range of one to two million dollars a year in utility revenues coming back to, to Germantown if, if, if the, the full extent of the IGA were reached. So that's a pretty broad range, but there's a lot of unknowns in, in, in what could happen in the future. One of the other questions that came up in the listening session was, you know, impact on, on Germantown road programs and other capital projects. And I think one of the important things for, to point out to the residents, as, as well as the village board, is first of all, there's, there's a, a, a difference in the way that the sewer and water utilities are financed, as opposed to, to general village services. Sewer and water utilities are set up as enterprise funds, they're, they're separate financial entities that are, are not at all tax levy supported. So for residents who may be listening, none of the property tax dollars that you utilize, that you pay to the village, go towards the sewer and water utilities. And the same would be true if, if, if the village does approve this agreement and, and those services are extended to Richfield. It has no impact on things like roads, or parks, or libraries, or other facilities that are funded through property tax dollars. The second, I guess, point of emphasis on this, as, as the village attorney mentioned under terms and conditions, is that the IGA does require Richfield to pay all costs to extend service to Richfield. So another, one of the questions or concern, or questions that came up during the listening sessions was why would Germantown pay to extend water and sewer service to Richfield? And the answer to that is, under the IGA, the draft that you, that's, that's in the packet tonight, the village of Germantown residents would not pay to extend water and sewer to Richfield, Richfield would assume all of their, their costs. So in short, this agreement would not have any impact on, on Germantown's budget, capital budget, or operating budget for roads or, or other services. What does the, the village receive in exchange for providing these services? One of the, in addition to the impact on the enterprise funds and the, the additional revenues, the broadening of the customer base that benefits the utilities, in addition to that, Richfield is going to pay the cost to extend water and sewer infrastructure through to the Freistadt District connection point, as the, the Public Works Director diagrammed out earlier. The preliminary estimated cost of that is, is nine million dollars. So that supports the, the opportunity for the village of Germantown to develop that Freistadt District, create some sort of frontage road system without having to pay that nine million dollars in infrastructure. The village of Germantown would have to pay the difference in the cost of, of pipes. So if, and the engineers always hate when I do this, but, so if we needed a fifteen-inch pipe, and instead we're going to go up to an eighteen-inch pipe, we would pay the difference between the fifteen and eighteen-inch pipe. Historically, that's not a significant cost as opposed to digging and, and putting the initial pipe underground anyways. In addition to that, portions of the Freistadt District are under consideration for the county ARPA funds for next gen, generation housing. The county has allocated ten million dollars out of their ARPA funds for next generation housing. The staff was asked by county staff to submit a list of potential sites. Freistadt District was included in that, as well as, as several other areas of Germantown. And this is an area where ARPA funds could potentially be directed to support a development of that nature. And, and in short, the, the Richfield, the contribution of infrastructure in that Freistadt District makes the type of development that seems to be under consideration as part of the 2050 planning process more financially feasible. The impact on, on general fund services was another question that has been raised. First of all, as I, just restate again, village of Richfield customers would pay all of the operating costs for the sewer and water of the respective utilities. The Germantown residents would not be in any way subsidizing the cost of providing services to, to Richfield customers. And, and as I, I mentioned on the capital side of things, since there is a differentiation between the, the enterprise funds and the general fund, there'd be no direct impact on Germantown general fund or, or services, none. No property tax dollars in Germantown would go towards providing these services to Richfield. There also has been the question of, of the impact of spillover businesses, business from employees working at Richfield. A one million square foot facility is a large facility, it could have anywhere from, you know, fifteen hundred to two thousand employees. It's likely that some of those employees would cross Highway 41 and, and do business in Germantown, whether it's buying gas, or groceries, or going to restaurants. And there, that is likely there would be some services, services required for those employees. If they're, if they're speeding, they, they might get a ticket, although I guess we do recover some, some revenue in that case. If they have a, a medical issue at a Germantown business, there could be, there's a potential that we might have to dispatch an ambulance to provide service. So there, there are some, and the level of which those services, the cost of those services for employees on the Richfield side coming into Germantown, and the, the amount of cost of that services is something I couldn't estimate, but I would acknowledge that, that there likely, at some points in time, would be some services that would be provided. On the other hand, that spillover business from employees working on the Richfield side also would provide some benefits to the Germantown businesses, you know, gas stations, restaurants, stores that those customers would be frequenting, would see some economic benefit from that spillover. And at some point, that would be reflected in the, the tax base. And then finally, I just would point out, in, in this area, that the type of agreement that is before you would also create a foundation for future cooperation and other services could potentially include things like library, fire services, et cetera, that, that, that could potentially be looked at in the future. I also wanted to touch base briefly on the well remediation fund that the village attorney mentioned. The engineering analysis that was completed as part of the permitting process for well number twelve, I think showed, as, as a layman, I would say pretty conclusively, that, that there's no impact expected on any of the wells related near well number twelve. I'd also point out, and I should have included this in, in the text on the slide, I should also point out that the way the water system works is that it is a networked system. So in the unlikely event that there, that there are impacts on any, on, on any residential wells near number twelve, near well number twelve, since well number twelve will provide water to Village Hall, as well as it does to the businesses in the Holy Hill area, and if this is approved on the Richfield side of things, you, you couldn't really say which gallon of water that was pumped, was it the gallon of water that went to the, the southeast corner of, of the village, or was it the, the gallon of water that went to Richfield? There's, there's not a way to, to assign which would have caused the problem, and in the unlikely event a problem does exist. But to address this issue which was raised, we did ask Richfield to contribute fifty thousand dollars for a well remediation fund, and they have agreed to that. That would be kept in place for the life of the TID, probably close to twenty years. And if there are any excessive drawdown issues within a half a million, half a mile of well number twelve, until the closure of that TID, those funds could be utilized at the, at Germantown's discretion to, to remediate any of those issues. I'll also cover next steps we've scheduled and have just started publicizing, a public listening session that the village board asked us to put together for six o'clock Wednesday, March 30th, here in Village Hall, and to provide residents another opportunity to come in and provide their opinions. And this is, as you noticed on the agenda, this is only noticed as a presentation tonight, so there's no action requested from the village board, but we do plan to place this on the village board agenda for April 4th, for action from the village board. So with that, in addition to the four of us who've presented, we also have the water and sewer superintendents here to answer any questions, and the village administrator and village president from Richfield are here as well.
Wasn't there a cost estimate of what it would cost Richfield to bring water up from Jackson, service their site? And does anybody have that figure?
There was a, a preliminary estimate. We do have a copy of that report, I don't remember what it is off the, off the top of my head, or what it was.
Get that.
That's something we can get.
Eight million? No? Yes?
Apparently, eight million is, is.
If eight million's, eight million's good.
Board? Other questions? Justy Chan Miller?
If I read this correctly, they're offering, Richfield is offering nine million for the extension from into Freistadt area.
They would pay the cost of, of running sewer and water down to that Freistadt connection. The estimated cost is nine million. So if it costs less than that, they would, they would, they would pay what the actual costs are. If it costs more, they would pay whatever those actual costs are.
It's just the water and sewer, it's not roads or other infrastructure, correct?
Still the floor?
And the fifty thousand dollars is in a escrow account for satisfy any of the people that were with the wells that were tested. How many, how many residents were tested? Do you remember? Five? Five or six?
This would cover all of the houses within a half a mile of the well. So there's, there's more than the five. I don't have an exact count, but there are more than the five that were, that were included in the test.
Is a well ten thousand dollars?
It would be to probably re-dig or deepen.
Yeah, I, I think that's insufficient funding. One goes, would they all go? I don't know. I've never had a well, sorry. This is a creation of a TID? Is that what we would be agreeing to?
By Richfield.
Richfield's.
Would create the TID.
Richfield does?
Right.
Okay.
That's to cover their infrastructure costs and what they're agreeing to in cost on the IGA.
Okay. So my concern is, they will pay their own utilities, they'll get our water, but we're responsible for getting the infrastructure over there?
No.
No, they are. But don't we have to monitor what, what is going over there?
The costs of, of monitoring and maintaining are included in the rates that they would be paying. So yes, we would monitor and maintain the system after it's set up, but they would, they would pay one hundred percent of the cost for monitoring and maintaining the system.
Right. And, and that's once it's there. During construction, obviously, we would have our typical process with any, as we do with any construction, we would have inspectors that monitor the construction and make sure that it happens according to our code, those types of things. Costs associated with that would be charged to Richfield.
Okay. Because I don't think we have enough resources to cover all the engineering that would be required, our own village.
These would be, for projects of this nature, they'd typically be contracted engineers, and, and Richfield would pay the cost of those contracts.
And putting in this infrastructure, you don't see going forward any other requirements for additional resources in the water sewer department of the village of Germantown?
To the, to the extent that, that there would be any, any additional resources they would be paid for out of the, the, the rates that Richfield customers are, are paying. So when I've mentioned that with that initial development, we would, you know, collect somewhere in the range of a hundred thousand dollars per year in fees, some of that may go towards, at some point in the future, additional staff or resources to provide
Do we know the name of, my understanding when this first came out was there was one large company, a million square feet. Do we know the name of the company?
We know that the developer is Hillwood Development. We don't know the name of, of a company, and, and we don't know if they have a signed lease agreement. We do know that they have the land under contract and that they would like to move forward with the, the project. We don't know who the company would be that would be their first tenant.
And you don't know what kind of industry? Distribution, food? Zep and Sherrod?
I, I don't, I don't believe that, that that information is out there. I think, I, I've done just what I've been able to, the research I've been able to do on Hillwood, just by researching the company, and what I could find online about them. Hillwood is a, a large, it's actually a global developer. They have developments across North America and parts of Europe. Their customers are typically large, like Fortune 500-type companies that, for these types of facilities. They, they have had multiple agreements where they've built facilities for Amazon. Whether that's what's going in here or not, I, I don't know. I'm not sure that Hillwood knows at this point. But they are, they are a very large developer with business relationships with a, a number of, of large Fortune 500 companies.
Do you have any idea what the pay scale is for the fifteen hundred to two thousand employees that this place is going to be in?
No, I don't.
Is the million dollar square foot business going to be the first development that would go in?
Possibly. Again, Hillwood has not submitted a, and this isn't on our side of the, of the equation, they wouldn't submit a site plan to, to Germantown. That would have to be approved by the, the Richfield Village Board. And the, Rich, the, Hillwood has not submitted a site plan for approval by the Richfield Village Board. So, you know, in my experience, and, and I think with our experience together in the village board here on developments on the Germantown side, oftentimes, the developers aren't able to get an agreement that allows them to release information until they have approval to move forward with the, the project. So I don't think it's unusual that, that that type of information isn't available at this point.
I'll, I'll speculate a little bit more for you, and just suggest that in terms of nine million dollars worth of infrastructure costs, it's likely that that would be the first development. That, you, you're not going to bite off that much in infrastructure without having a known quantity of what you're going to be getting in tax revenue. So I would think yes, but to Steve's point, we don't know for sure.
And my question is, I don't know how this got in one of the slides, but I saw something about county ARPA funds and next generation. I don't know how this got in one of the slides, but I saw something about county ARPA funds and next-generation housing. What does that have to do with supplying water?
Well, the, the water and sewer lines would go through the Freistad District. And, and would, and by nature, and I think what we've seen is where there's water and sewer lines, there tends to be new development. The 2050 Plan, or the draft of it that the Plan Commission is working on, does include some residential development in that area that would qualify under the, the county's next-generation housing program and is potentially available. Could potentially get ARPA funds that have been allocated by the county for that purpose.
I, I don't think it should be included in, in this presentation. That's my point. I guess the, the main point is we had a resident come up on the beginning of our meeting and talk about our 2050 Plan. The 2050 Plan had a good start, and then it stopped. But if we don't have a goal and know where we're going to put residential, green space, industrial, light industrial, residential, multifamily units, how are we going to plan for the future? Because another adjoining village wants to expand. At the listening session with Richfield in Germantown, a resident got up and said, "This conversation has been going on since 1970." I'm newer on the board. I've only been here going on a year. And it's, it's, it's disturbing to me that we're, we, we keep going back to the 2020 Plan on some of our development, and we need to get going, and that's our goal for this year, 2022, by the end of July, to get the 2050 Plan done. So my suggestion is, why are we rushing this if it's been going on since the 70s?
I, I think that point was probably brought up for, for crowd impact. We have not been discussing this continually since 1970. It may have come forward as a previous possible, possibility, but it's never really been taken any further than a question as a, as a possible service, because there wasn't anything up in that area to provide. We would have had to bring the sewer and water all the way up there in 1970, which it wasn't even anywhere near it, in order to, to service Richfield at all. In 1970, where our sewer and water lines were, that would have been an impossibility, let alone the, the, the land that it would have gone through, that it would have been blank, just to get it up in that area. So I think that was, that statement was made as an impact statement, and maybe it came up again in between now and 1970, but not to any serious degree that was discussed or approved by a board or even went into intergovernmental agreement or MOU. So this really is the, the most that it's been discussed simply because of where the sewer and water is today, which is on the other side of the freeway. So all previous discussions in my mind couldn't be taken seriously because of where our sewer and water was and what it would have taken to get it over there. So we're to this point now because of where our sewer and water is. So at, I don't look at, 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 as a 50- or 60-year discussion. I look at it as a year and a half's discussion.
You still have the floor, Trustee Miller?
One last comment. I have, I have great hesitation giving out our, our, it's not even a loan. It's giving our greatest natural resource, water. And I, I, I'm, I'm just, I can't support this. Thanks.
Trustee Kaminski.
I'm, I'm confused as to what you expect from us here tonight. This is, this is presentation only, but you're inviting a debate where we could be here until midnight if I get going on this.
It's questions.
But I'm just serious. If all we want is questions to help clarify, then maybe we can get out of here before 10 o'clock. But if you want to debate this, I'm, I'm, then we'll be here till 1:00 in the morning because I'm going to bring up a lot of things that we've talked about in closed session and some things that I've changed my mind on, but I don't think we want to go there. That's not the point of this. I think you're showing us what you're going to show people on March 30th, correct?
Yeah.
And if we look at it and that, then, then let's just cut off debate on this because it's going to turn into debate.
Right.
And we're not getting out of here once that starts. And thank goodness that one of, one of our more volatile members on this topic isn't here tonight, because we will never get out of here. So I guess I'm asking again, what kind of questions do you want? Because they're all going to lead to debate.
Do you, do you feel what you've seen in the presentation presents enough information and, and has a, provides a, a good basis of understanding to the residents that'll participate?
I think it prob, personally, I think it probably does. And I also think I would explain the ARPA funds more. I do agree with Trustee Miller. Where did that come from? And once we're offered ARPA funds by the county, do we have to accept them? Is that part of this deal? Because in that case, let's hold off on developing.
It's not part of the deal.
Let's hold off on developing the area. Again, I, now we're getting into debate, but what's the rush?
I think part of that is just a, a possibility of development.
That's a question that will come up. I'm just saying, be prepared for it. What is that? Why is it in there? It has nothing to do with water and sewer.
I have a question on the presentation. Early in the presentation, I think it was Brian's part. I'm sorry, you still have the floor, Trustee. Are you done? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Let me secondly find it. There was a statement made, get to it, because I don't want to misquote it. It says pays material costs. It was the IGA general terms slide. And it said Germantown provides service to the Northeast Corridor. And in the second bullet point said pays material cost to upsize pipe, which I get. And then it says, "And half of land acquisition costs for areas where right-of-way is acquired." Can you expand what, what that would exactly mean?
Sure. So there are going to be areas, probably mostly, once you get beyond the Freistad District area, that Richfield may likely just put the pipes in an easement. There may be parts within Germantown where that is true as well. However, it is anticipated that if we're going to be running water and sewer, it may make sense to put a road on top of that as we're going through, to encourage development on our side. And where we anticipate to do that, where there will ultimately be a road, the, instead of just acquiring an easement for the purposes of putting in the sewer and water pipes, we would then acquire, in conjunction with Richfield, the actual physical right-of-way. And in order to do that, the cost of acquiring that right-of-way would be split 50-50.
For a road or for the pipe? If you'd be going through right-of-way, you would, you may need, I mean, you come close to 41-45 there on alternate B. The, the. Could there be an issue of placing it within the right-of-way of, of, of the state or interstate right-of-way, and then that cost would need to be shared? Or are we talking about road only?
This would be if, if we acquired any new right-of-way for road, you know, we're going to put a road through the Freistad District somewhere. Where that road will match up with utilities, which obviously will, you know, you try to do as much as you can anyway. The cost of acquiring that new right-of-way would be split, just the cost of acquiring the right-of-way.
Okay. All right, I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the presentation? Trustee Baum.
At the listening session, I believe there were questions as to what is the county's input on all this? I didn't see anything on here as to county involvement.
ARPA funds.
That's it? Just the ARPA funds?
Yeah, for the next.
As possible use for, for sewer and water as it extends down.
Okay. That's it.
Suggestion.
Trustee Kaminski.
Just a suggestion. We now have seen this document. Why can't we submit questions that we think still might need answers from a citizen's perspective? Just a thought, and we can email them to Steve or whatever. And you'd have it, then you'd be prepared for March 30th. And then we'll all debate this on April, what?
Fourth or whatever it was.
And that'll be our final decision? Okay. The Almo should be a separate meeting than.
You want pizza for every meeting?
Should be a separate, that's it, meeting.
Trustee Jan Miller, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Is it, you mentioned that the sewer would be a 20%. And I don't know of any of your other charts, you know, income, a 20% income to the Village of Germantown. So is, based on the estimated volume, can you quantify that in dollars? I think that would be very helpful because a lot of the people at that inquiry wanted to see numbers. They wanted things quantified. That would be my suggestion. That's possible.
And thank you. And I'll, I'll work on that a little bit further. There's going to be quite a range. You know, it depends on how many customers, how much flow the types of customers, but I'll, I'll work on getting a little bit more information on that.
Further questions or comments? Trustee Kaminski.
Just to follow up to Trustee Miller, what she had said. And how do we decide on 20%? Why is that the magic number as opposed to 15 or 25 or whatever? Just something to consider for the 30th.
How it was derived?
Okay.
And just to, to follow up, Trustee Kaminski, according to the, the report that Richfield had prepared, there were two alternative routes to serve through Jackson. One was 9.87 million, one was 9.8 million, were their estimated costs.
Did they estimate any timing, how long that would take?
I don't recall there being a time component that I recall seeing. Do you, Jeff? No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? Trustee Myers.
The Freistad District, break the route, the blue or the red, yet?
No. The, the, the routes ultimately, you know, is going to require, you know, an analysis, you know, in terms of wetlands, that kind of stuff, which hasn't been done. We've, we've identified those as, as potential routes based, you know, primarily on what we can see. You know, that, that we know kind of where wetlands are generally. But until we, we actually physically go out and map those and figure out where they are, those types of concerns, the, the routes influx a little bit. In fact, that's why you see the, the, the picture that I used of the two routes is a little bit different than the picture Larry used. That's one of the reasons that it's still a little bit in flux in terms of where that's going to be.
You talked to any of the potential owners?
Yes.
On the Freistad area, where we're looking at the blue and the red, see, there doesn't go all the way up to Holy Hill Road. You got that, you got the, that storage place. That's not part of that road, or part of this discussion.
The water, the water and the sewer connection to Richfield would follow along the southern side of the railroad tracks and then go south from the railroad tracks. So the, the, the portion north of the railroad tracks up to Holy Hill Road is, is not included in, in this particular construction project.
That, that area is actually served as, as part of the Holy Hill utilities that are already there. So that it wouldn't connect. The water may, I guess, at some point, but sewer would all flow north.
What I understand, the sewer and water is just beyond, I think it stops by the, the gas station there?
A little bit west there. It stops just on the west side of the, no, east side of the road that would come up to the north, the, the entrance to the storage facility.
Go on that part. Under page five, section C, number four, it talks about being paid by both parties. What was, are we talking about 50-50 there? Because it doesn't talk about that.
Page five of the IGA?
The presentation.
Or, or slide five?
IGA, yes, thank you. Number, on number four, forced by both parties, but it doesn't say equally or what percentage.
Where, where are you?
Section is under sanitary sewer service.
C-section.
Right.
Or states about in regard to local, whatever per se.
All state and local regulations?
Right. And that one, and then at the very end it says enforced by both parties. I was just wondering, is that 50-50?
The, the, the village, like, we, meaning the village, Germantown would likely have any enforcement responsibilities, to the extent that we deemed it necessary. Obviously, we would lean on Richfield to assist us to the extent that they could, but typically, those types of issues are either handled just through us, through our citation, or if it's a commercial user, oftentimes the DNR itself will get involved. And then we don't even have to, to deal with anything. But the, 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 the idea being is, is that everybody understands that we're going to play by the same rules as it relates to environmental protections.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
I'm going to start with one. I, I, I know what Terry said. Under, same section C, go to number seven.
Yep.
There, Brian?
Yep.
Okay. Under the last paragraph, it talks about within a, a period of time. That's, I think it should be spelled out. Although you're running into problems. What did you mean by that? See what I'm talking about, Brian?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by spelled out, I guess.
That's what it says there. Read that last paragraph.
Corrective action.
Period of time, but it doesn't say what it is.
If I can play lawyer on that. I'm going to say. Because depending upon what the corrective action is, it could have a different period of time. So if it's, if it's a, a very quick, easy fix that could be done in three days, the specified period of time would be three days. If it's a, a major project that might require engineering and design and planning, that, that could require six months, then we would specify six months. So I think that's why the, this doesn't, this, in the, in the agreement, it doesn't include a specific period of time. Now the lawyer could tell me if I'm.
Well, like I say, but it's talking about Germantown and Richfield is going to agree to something, and so. I just, I understand what you're saying. I just think that some verbiage should be put in there that talks about that aspect, what you're talking about, Steve. That way you would understand that particular part. Both sites certainly would like to have the area taken care of right of way, rather than let it go for whatever. What if you have something, I'm just, I'm just, when you don't have something that's spelled out, and I understand what you're saying, you, you can run into problems. We had problems once before going to, in the verbiage, same animal, I understand it, with the sewer and water going to Grace Church across.
Phew.
But.
Right, totally, I mean, totally different circumstance and language.
I understand, not the same, but I'm just saying, you can run into problems. I just don't want us to get caught in this.
I understand your points, and I'll look at it.
Please do, thank you, Brian, appreciate that.
Other questions? Trustee Myers?
I'm just looking through my papers here, please. We talked about, in regards, that you talked about before, Brian, dealing with the sewer, or Steve, what you talked about, in regards to sewer and water, that there'd be enough money to be able to pay for future repairs, because under the agreement, any additional repairs going into whatever is going to be gone, and borne by us to repair that. How did you figure that chart out? Can you show me some chart or something that you and I could look at someday this week in regard to, or whatever you had to figure that out?
Do you mean the rate structure and how it recovers?
Said that there would be money in there to pay for future repairs, for sewer or water.
Well.
I was wondering, how was that figured out?
For example, the best example of that is on the water side, the rate study that just was approved by the PSC. That's exactly how those calculations are made, and it does spell it out in a great deal of detail. I haven't, and we probably should at some point in the not-too-distant future, do an analysis of the sewer rates as well. I haven't looked back at the old one, but there would be a rate study that would have been done, and the sewer superintendent could probably tell us when. But that rate study would have the breakdown that shows how the rates recover those capital infrastructure costs.
Just interesting, like I said, because this goes on forever, is that, so if there's money, does it do it, and how fast that money actually comes back in? Because you're talking forever, per se.
But the first thing, if you're interested in looking, that would be to look at the water rate study. That breaks that out in quite a bit of detail. And I'd be happy to walk through that with you, if you'd like.
Fine.
Not tonight, but.
And under J, effective agreement, last thing.
Yep.
There, Brian, let me know.
Yep.
If you want to explain to people what that means, should not be seen as a precedent.
Well, it just, yeah, it just means that.
Go ahead.
Somebody else comes to us and says, "Hey, we'd like water, too." Doesn't mean we have to provide it, but it's just, these circumstances caused us to enter into this agreement, and we can choose to do whatever we want with the next request that we get.
President concludes with any questions? Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Anything else in regards to this new business item? And I look forward to the next meeting, that's going to be held before the public on this. Make sure you tell everybody you know or meet or see or communicate with in the next week or so.
When do you want our questions emailed?
Tomorrow. The sooner the better, especially if they require some research to answer. But definitely, if you could, you know, tomorrow would be great, actually.
Does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make? Trustee Myers?
To answer whoever's question was before, the county board, as at the last meeting, approved ARPA fund of $125,000 going for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
What capacity?
No other information? Before we are adjourned to the next regular Village Board meeting, it will be on Monday, April 4th, at 7:00 PM here in the Village Hall Boardroom. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching. Have a good night.